The whole of March thirteenth to order, please. We acknowledge that the Northern Rockies Administration Centre is located in the heart of the traditional territories of the Dunae Cree and Dunisaw peoples of the Proffert River and Fort Nelson First Nations. We further recognize the rights provided by our treaty. Finally, we celebrate the contributions and the enduring presence of the Métis people in our region. Please be advised that this afternoon's meeting will be recorded and streamed live to the public to attend virtually. Are there any additions to today's meeting? Afternoon's meeting staff? I have none, council? Okay. I think I'd like to just change the agenda today. There's an awful lot on today's agenda. I would like to take item number seven point two, the committee of the whole report nine twenty-three Animal Responsibility Programme off today's meeting and ask staff to find another day. That that meeting will probably take an hour all on its own to talk about that. It's been ongoing for a couple of years and you know, for me to review it in a week just was I just didn't have enough time to absorb all of it and and I don't want to really take all of today's meeting up for or something like that. We'll arrange another meeting. Everybody's okay with the agenda the way it is? Good. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak with respect to anything that's on today's agenda? Okay, that puts us straight into petitions and delegations. And so we have folks here from the Mackenzie County Regional Alliance, the town of Rainbow Lake, the town of High Level and the Mackenzie County. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for for asking to meet with us and and put your ideas forward with respect to this road. Perhaps we'll do a quick round of 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 introductions so that you know who's in our room and then maybe you can let us know who's in yours. So I'm Rob Fraser. I'm the mayor of the Northern Rockies Regional Municipality. Counselor Gruing, please.
Hello, Lorraine Gruing, Regional Counselor.
Hello, Brenda Nax, Regional Counselor.
Sorry, Jalen McIver, Corporate Manager.
Erin Lavale, Deputy CEO.
Scott Berry, CEO.
Danny Souls, Regional Counselor.
Hello, John Roper, Regional Counselor.
Hello, Leslie Dickey, Regional Counselor.
Thank you. And we have Archie Harold here, who is a counselor with the Fort Nelson First Nation. Archie, would you like to come up to the table?
Hi, I'm a counselor to sit again to listen to the presentation here.
There's a spot over here if you want. Okay, all right. Just trying to be nice, Archie. Okay, can I ask you guys to introduce yourselves, please?
Town of High Level, Crystal McAteer, Mayor.
Counselor Mark Weedron.
Counselor Brant Anderson.
Counselor Josh Lambert.
Hi, Counselor Boyd Langford.
Chief Administrative Officer, Clarton Castle.
Acting Secretary, Charles Costens.
Jan Welkietown, Counselor, High Level.
Jerry Phillips, Director of Finance and Administration.
Kerry Jessman, Counselor.
Just to let you know, Mackenzie County has signed on individually. So Josh, do you want to start?
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, Josh Knollson, we're from Mackenzie County and with the county we have, I think, Darrell Dirksen, Lisa Wardley and Counselor Ernie Peters, as well as our CEO Byron Peters. Counselor Peter Brown.
Thanks, Josh. And is there anybody there from Rainbow Lake?
Not here. We thought they were signing on in Rainbow Lake.
Okay.
So we didn't at Mackenzie County didn't get a link for the conference either. The only link we got was for a webinar attendee. So I raised my hand and she promoted me to a panelist. But so probably the town of High Level didn't get a proper link either, like a meeting like, because I know we didn't.
It would be High Levels here, so it would be Rainbow Lake.
Yeah.
We
Jalen?
Yeah, the link was the same for all. We host all of our meetings as webinars and then promote the appropriate participants to panelists. So there is a list there, Mayor Fraser.
I can't read it.
It's like, it's very lengthy. There's a number of participants. We just, it's hard to tell who's a member of the public and who's a member of the of the delegation.
Right. So is there anybody from Rainbow Lake that would like to speak?
Our CIO is just speaking to them.
So they have joined, but they're in webinar mode and cannot speak or appear. So they're going to try to log in again.
Okay.
Hello.
Yeah.
Karine, she's helping you there.
Okay.
Karine and that's the counselor. He's accepting on a webinar.
Yeah. Set the panelist invite that I sent them.
Yeah. Yeah, just.
I think he's just sitting.
There they come. Yeah. This is probably the most number of people we've had come online for ever.
Yeah. Are we there?
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Thank you for having us. I'm Mayor Michelle Ferris, town of Rainbow Lake. I have with me Deputy Mayor Julie Melville, Counselor Coral Dost, our CIO Dan Fletcher. I'm not sure. We have one other counselor that may join us separately. He's on shift. So anyway, um, yeah, thank you.
So I also see that we have chief and some of the counselors from the Fort Nelson First Nations. I've already introduced Archie. Chief Gail, would you like to introduce yourself?
Thank you, Chief Charlene Gail, Fort Nelson First Nation. Also, along with me, I do have some counselors. Some are probably just trying to sign on now or are still in the webinar mode. And I also have Catherine Wovington, who is our acting lands director at this time. So musty, thank you. And thanks, Archie, for attending in person. We appreciate it.
Awesome. Well, welcome, everybody. So we've got you as a delegation, so I'm just not sure how you would like to proceed, but I'll turn the time over to you and hopefully we'll have a great conversation.
Okay, I will start from Rainbow Lake and then I'll pass it off to town of High Level and then Mackenzie County. For us here in Rainbow Lake, the potential for our Highway fifty-eight west in Alberta to meet your SYD Road in B.C. has always been a top priority. And since the nineteen sixties, this has been a topic of discussion with past and present councils of Rainbow Lake. For Rainbow Lake, this means lots of different things. One will no longer be at the end of the road. So the economic driver via through traffic would create endless tourism opportunities for both of us. Generate energy development and oil and gas, along with geothermal lithium possibilities, emergency evacuation routes and support during wildfire season. As of today, Rainbow Lake has one road out of town. And with the wildfires and floods happening in the past, this is a very important component to these discussions. We believe that for you guys, the benefits of this road would also be beneficial. The economic driver via through traffic, the goods produced in Northwest Alberta. Example, Rainbow Gas, High Level Wood Products, Mackenzie County agricultural goods to and from NWT. The tourism, access to broader population base. Here in Alberta, we all love your mountains and the hot springs. We just want an easier way to get there. Emergency evacuation and support during wildfire season could be just as important to your residents as it is to ours. So for us here in Rainbow Lake, today is just to say hello, but are hoping these discussions will lead to more and working together to bring all of our partners together to make this corridor a reality.
Okay.
Crystal? So I'm Mayor McAteer, but we have somebody who's more of an expert. I'm going to defer to the deputy mayor who's been longtime activist in this road.
Hi. Good evening. I'm not quite like Mayor Ferris. I don't have anything prepared, but I think the idea of connecting Highway fifty-eight from Alberta into British Columbia has been something that's been on the books since certainly back in the nineteen sixties. I know over the years, we've had extensive discussions with Alberta Transportation. They actually have engineered drawings, from what I understand, showing a preferred route over there. Mind you, since then, industry has gone and done what they want to do and that they create roads where they want them and not necessarily where the public wants them. So there is a fairly extensive road network follow to industry standards, not to municipal or provincial standards. And I just think it would make economic sense for the entire region, both in British Columbia and in Alberta, to encourage that east-west trade corridor so that we're not always looking to the south for our needs. As Mayor Ferris pointed out, you know, the tourism aspect of all of this, the safety and security of our communities in terms of being able to get people in or out of the region in the event of a natural disaster or wildfire. I'm not sure if you've paid attention to the news over the years, but we've had a number of significant events in our region the last few years, from the Chukakeg Fire in twenty nineteen to severe flooding to the west of us over the last couple of years. And you know, whether it's a road that we're working together on or whether it's some other regional projects that would be beneficial to both sides of the border, I think it's important that we try and establish a closer working relationship, one that we haven't had over the years. We all share similar industries and expectations. We're sort of see ourselves as the last frontier up in Northwest Alberta. And and you know, you guys are sort of in a very, very similar situation to us. So just interested to hear your thoughts on what you would see to be the potential benefits of having a stronger connection between our regions, both from council to council, but also industry to industry.
Thank you, Boyd.
Josh Knellson here. I think everything's got covered fairly well. I'd just like to add, I guess, we got I got friends and family in Fort Nelson. I've worked there myself. I see a benefit, but today I think I'd like to hear what what Fort Nelson has to say in the people of the area. If there's a if see a benefit in this and if they're if they do, how how you'd like to move forward and I guess that's about it. So yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I guess you're looking for some some conversation with respect to this and you know, I I think from talking to some of the folks in preparation for this meeting around the community, from from my perspective, is that there's there's a split really where there's 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 pros and cons of of this idea for the Northern Rockies. You've obviously pointed out some of the pros, that's for sure, increase in tourism, potential opportunity, just just the linkage between the between the communities helps us helps us all be better. The idea that that there's marketplace there for perhaps some agricultural goods that we're producing over here. The emergency response, being able to get get out of the community in in many directions rather than just to the south. Potential for, I mean, we had the the highway closure this year that, you know, that put us at the end of the road all of a sudden. And so we 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 get what you're saying in Rainbow Lake and what it's like to be at the end of the road for sure. And and so there are a lot of opportunities. There's a downside, though, and I think the biggest downside that I that I heard was was the competition potentially in this region that is likely going to get busier and busier as LNG and as the natural gas starts getting used in this in this country. I used to work out there an awful lot and and Fort Nelson has been the service center for this northeast part of of British Columbia, particularly north of of Sycaney, Sycaney Valley. And and we're in a an economic downturn and and economic tightening, I guess, of 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 our region. And and we're starting to see more and more of our contractors disappearing as 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 it contracts. You know, it's becoming tighter and tighter for our contractors to survive. And we're starting to lose capacity. And if we lose all of that capacity out of our community, when it does get busy again, we won't be able to, we won't be able to to be the service center, you know, that the service center will be from Alberta and or from from the Peace River area, just because we don't have contractors here. And so I mean, this road is not going to happen in the next couple of years. I I understand that. But philosophically, we have to consider, and I'm I'm an open market, free market kind of a guy. But I also I also have to listen to those folks who feel the competition would be too great on them. And I certainly would like to hear everybody else's thoughts. But there's pros and cons both ways. I talked to a couple of contractors who have worked in this country for a long time. And we know that that those roads have been open in the wintertime. And the number of calls they get to go to the Alberta side, I can count on one hand, according to them. So you know, but yet from working out there myself, I know when the road across that helmet was open and when the when the road across at the at the power line was open, we saw contractors coming across. It's the nature of the of the oil patch, I think, to use contractors that the consultants know. And they do an awful lot of work in Alberta and and a lot of that work is is goes to the to the folks in Alberta. We've done some work with the Coalition of Resource Municipalities. We know that potentially with differences between the two provinces, respected taxes, that potentially it costs a contractor in B.C. up to fifteen percent more than a contractor from Alberta with respect to the with the PST, the the gas tax, labor laws, those those types of things. And so if there's no enforcement at the border, potentially, there's not a level playing field. So those are some of the things that I've heard, and I certainly would open it up to anybody at the table who who might have some other thoughts. Counselor Souls?
Yeah, I too. I'd reinforce the idea that the B.C. side from an oil and gas service perspective is gets the short end of the stick on a if there were a permanent road. Having said that, I think that that's something that would have to be addressed in a variety of other ways because the road actually has a lot of good benefit for all of us, as you say. I think of how intense you have a very extensive and intense agricultural community in your neck of the woods. And we have the railhead here that actually ties in way closer to the the port of Prince Rupert and so on. And I just, even though we as a community have been struggling for quite a few years to see the via or to see that rail line be a viable rail line, the more commodities that take a lot of room, like grain and so on, that could travel this way and get on this end of a rail that is more direct to the coast, that would be a benefit to us too. So I can see it's not that there's a rail line between, but trucking grain from Alberta to this area is not out of the question. And I see those as a good thing. Second thing is that I also see just the fact that you have the communication and connection east-west rather than only north-south. That can't be bad for any of us. It that is good. It's the more that we interact, the better off we are. We're in the same latitude. We face the same climate. And yes, it's a very good thing.
So I'm wondering if any of you are in in contact with with your own provincial government and the and the I guess the project that they're trying to advance with respect to a an economic corridor across Alberta and across the northern part of British Columbia to the coast. Are you familiar with 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 that at all? Or or even the the potential for a federal northern corridor that the University of Calgary has been studying? Are any of you in touch with any of those folks?
So I have been on those on those calls, those conferences, but we haven't heard a lot from them since early last year. Lisa is on the corridor, but I don't know how much she is able to divulge.
I can jump in here. So my name's Lisa Wardley. I'm actually counselor. I reside in Zama City, which is pretty much the same direct line across from Fort Nelson. I've lived here for thirty years. As Crystal mentioned, I've been on the Economic Quarter Task Force that was put together by M.L.A. Getson for the provincial government for Alberta. There is some things that are still under embargoed because, of course, it's, you know, political and all that kind of thing. But I can actually say that the east-west corridor, so basically the extension of Highway fifty-eight in Alberta to the east through to, you know, Wood Buffalo National Park, and then eventually linking up to Fort McMurray and Churchill, as well as to the west through to B.C. And again, looking at port connections, that's what kind of the the program itself actually looked at was port connections. And the port of Prince Rupert is, you know, for Alberta's purposes, is going to be, you know, the the big ticket for that because, of course, Vancouver is bogged down and out of space. And so the port of Prince Rupert actually is the probably the most attractive on the B.C. coastline for future exports for grain and agriculture, as well as forest products. And so as you mentioned, I'm not sure what his name was, but they mentioned about the agricultural products coming out of this region. Forest products is also out of this region and is bottlenecked by rail. We do actually have, so some of that, the corridor work is sort of at the premier level right now and is filtering down. I don't know if you noticed that our new information or infrastructure, or sorry, Transportation Minister is actually now the Minister of Transportation and Economic Corridors. But what that is, is it's taking a different view on what a corridor should look like. And whether it's it's not just necessarily road, but it could be rail. It could just be the development within a certain area to remove and concentrate footprint to be able to leave unfragmented land in other areas. We are working with the School of Public Policy, which is the University of Calgary, on their northern quarter project as well. And we actually had members from the School of Public Policy for University of Calgary sitting on the task force. And they are doing a lot of work with indigenous communities across the north and looking at food security, looking at you know, sort of the cost of living and the quality of life within communities as far as what increasing transportation networks within those areas look like. There is going to be, you know, of course, there's pros and cons to everything. And so they're actually working on on some of that. So I can't say too much, but I would love to be able to, you know, kind of talk at a greater level once that report is is public. And we can kind of sit down and and do some work. I know that through PENWAR, which is an organization, there's a lot of the the members from the B.C. provincial government as well, sit on that group, as well as linkages to the Yukon Alaskan NWT. So there's a lot of work being talked about as far as northern infrastructure, how we can support communities. What does that look like as far as cost benefit analysis that you might not necessarily be right next to the quarter? But what does that actually work out for the benefit to to communities that are maybe a little bit further away? And the big thing that they're, you know, that they're talking about is basically just that cost of living. We all know, living in the north, our cost of living is, you know, the higher, the more north you go, the higher it is. And people in the south just don't actually understand that. So what does that look like? Food security, just the transportation bottlenecks that we saw were over COVID and through the flooding in B.C. You know, how that how that one event affected everything across the board. So building in redundancy into transportation, you know, I understand the fears completely. As Boyd mentioned, I also sit as the Chair of Ready. And the east-west connector road has been a, you know, kind of longstanding project for us. And we understand that, you know, the competition fears and, you know, as you mentioned, there's probably ways to kind of work around that. But what can we actually look at as far as community health and building the north so that we're not all east-west or sorry, that north-south line that we actually have east-west connectors across across at least the western part of Canada. There is a very big push by a lot of individuals, as well as some of the First Nations in in Manitoba and across northern Saskatchewan as far as opening up the Port Churchill. And so a corridor that runs kind of the northern part of the provinces or northern Canada that runs from coast to Churchill, what is definitely going to be something that's going to be on the horizon within the next couple of years, for sure. So if that answers anything or confuses the this situation, but.
I thank you very much for that. I think it gives us a bit of an idea that we're we're on the same page when it comes to hearing about some of these east-west corridors and and some of these national ideas. Of course, none of this can happen unless it it comes across the traditional territory of Fort Nelson First Nation. And you know, I I don't want to put Chief Gail on the spot, but do you have any any comments, Chief Gail, with respect to with respect to this road? The environmental issues, the bridge that would have to go across the the Hay River?
Well, yeah, absolutely. You know, and in my role as Chief of the Territory, I don't see many benefits in our area to be able to create this road. I kind of see a little bit more negatives than benefits. And I also see that by building this road, there'd be severe impacts to my people's treaty rights. Currently, with the winter road, we're already having troubles with poaching of moose. You know, with the oil and gas industry and many workers coming from Alberta and the lower mainland and on the outskirts of Fort Nelson have increased hunting pressure. People bring back their buddies and their campers and haul out six moose at a at a time just by one hunting party. But also with the increased traffic, there would be increased mortality of caribou and the moose and other wildlife species in the area. You know, our people through the winter road have had to pick up garbage and clean up, you know, the pollution of that. But I'm also very concerned about impacts to the permafrost, you know, impacts to streams and riparian crossings. You know, you know, where's this material going to come to build this road? It will lead to significant impacts on our lands. And this is a very sensitive area. So I do have many concerns and I haven't had many. I haven't even have had a chance to even bring this to our members to have a discussion, a meaningful discussion. But as I said, I just feel like, you know, with the suffering of our economy and as Mayor Fraser alluded to, what are the benefits of that? More jobs going to Alberta. We've already seen the scenarios with the fly-in, fly-out, no tax, don't even hit Fort Nelson and and hit our our businesses. So that's a concern to me. And I know that, you know, oil and gas, as the mayor alluded to, does favor in hiring their friends from Alberta. And first and foremost, one of my huge responsibilities is to ensure that, you know, there's employment opportunities for our members and our neighbors, our treaty partners across the river. That's something that, you know, we have been working in collaboration for, you know, over a decade here and have done some tremendous work on on that part. So yeah, I there is significant concerns from the Fort Nelson First Nations, but we also do have our lands, Acting Lands Director Catherine. So if she'd like to add anything in on that, just welcome her to speak also.
I think you touched on all the points. And it's just something, yeah, we're looking at a very sensitive ecosystem through there. You know, and when you think of Fort Nelson First Nation Territory, it's already a highly impacted, highly fragmented land. And I mean, we're actively working to restore roads. So to then welcome a new all-season road through, you know, the heart of some pretty pristine habitat and area for especially for moose and caribou, just it seems counterproductive.
One of the questions I have for the Alberta side, the councils there, have you reached out to the Indigenous First Nations surrounding your municipalities?
So I guess everybody's looking at me. Do have a friendship accord with Do have a friendship accord with the D N A. We signed here this summer. We have not at all been in discussions with the D N A. This was a tri-council sort of led initiative, and this was going to be a high-level conversation. It's not that we were expecting answers today. It was just to peel out Fort Nelson and and the Indigenous in in the area, what your feelings would be to all year-round road. Rainbow Lake took the lead on this, so they might want to jump in. They may have had a conversation because it's the traditional territory of the D N A, so.
Yes. In Rainbow Lake, we have had talks or starts of talks with the Denata. We had one big meeting with both councils, and that was one question that their chief brought to us. He was very interested in the road going through. Right now, we're waiting for it. We're waiting for them to accept our next invite for a meeting to discuss. They weren't available for tonight, so, you know, we are in talks with our First Nations next door to us. They play a big part in this.
Okay, I I just think about, you know, today's day and age and the, you know, the adoption of undripped, which was adopted by the province of B C and also Canada. And I think it's really important before these kind of discussions do go forward that there's consultation and consent and recognition of and recognition of indigenous rights. You know, one thing that we always look at is the environmental protection of a proposal, what the economic development impacts would be, what the cultural preservation impacts would be, and, you know, working towards reconciliation. Those are some of the things that are very important to me when I when I have a discussion with another government. And also really important to the Fort Nelson First Nation that we do have really good relationships with those that live among us. So, you know, I'm proud of the work that we have done with the the town and the mayor and council and the residents. I mean, there's a lot of positive things that are that are happening here. And at the end of the day, I don't want to be the Debbie Downer that, you know, says no. But, you know, this is a huge conversation that would have to be had with our people. There would have to be lots of consultation, and at the end of the day, no means no and yes means yes. And I think those kind of things do need to be respected. I I feel for you guys. I know you're Alberta, we're B C. You know, these borders were put upon us by a colonial system. We never had borders. And, you know, one benefit I would see is to be able to see my cousins a little bit more often than just the winter. But it is a conversation that would would need meaningful consultation.
Oh, absolutely. And this is what we were here for tonight was just to say hello and and see how you guys felt about all of this and whether we're on the same page or whether we're not, whether we want to move forward with more discussion or we're not on the same page, and this is kind of where it stops. I'm really hoping not, that I know the road's not going to happen overnight and within the next couple of years, and there's lots to be done, but I'm hoping that you guys are willing on your end to continue discussions with us on our end and see where it comes out. And maybe it won't take sixty years to get back. Have a road.
Deputy Mayor would like to speak, if that's all right?
Hi, sorry, just circle back to a couple of things. I had neglected to mention the railhead in in Fort Nelson, which would be extremely important to industry, whether that's farming, whether that's forestry. In terms of, you know, the competition go across the border, we're not in the same economic situation that we were in, say, fifteen or twenty years ago. High level, sorry, get it the other way around. Fort Nelson right now is probably where high level in this region was ten or fifteen years ago. In that the amount of oil and gas activity in this area is decreasing. Not that yours is decreasing. I understand that it's increasing, but all of the service companies have pulled out of this region. There's no longer any major service company based anywhere in northwest Alberta. There are only a few local contractors here in high level that do do some very specific things in the oil patch, but they currently are sort of at the capacity of of what they can produce. Rainbow Lake, I believe, doesn't have any major service companies based there either. So if they are coming up, we're facing the same situation as you. They're coming out of the south, whether that's Grand Prairie, Edmonton. And when they're coming to you, I don't think they're coming through high level. I think they're going up through through Fort St. John. So I think right now the situation would actually be reversed in that if that year-round access was there, it would be service companies and contractors out of Fort Nelson that would be at an advantage, significant advantage cost-wise, doing work in this region. Because for them to come across the border from Fort Nelson to say the Rainbow Lake area or even closer to high level, you're looking at a couple of hundred kilometers as opposed to six hundred kilometers coming out of Grand Prairie, for example. So, you know, I think the economic benefits are significantly greater for the British Columbia side at this point. So we're really focused more on, you know, what could it do for, you know, the agricultural forestry and logging, the safety and protection of having more than one way in and out, you know, access to healthcare. In my day-to-day life outside of a councillor, I know many members of the Denata. And yes, the border is an artificial line. And the one comment that has been made to me hundreds of times is just what the chief said, is that they would love to have better access because the the nation is spread across the entire region. It's not, there's one group on this side of the border and another group on that side. And so I've talked to literally hundreds of people from the Denata community that would love to see that road simply so that they have better access to their family members. Because when the winter access isn't open or in winters when it isn't put in, which I think has happened several times over the last number of years, it's essentially a twelve-hour drive for them to get from our region over to see family in Fort Nelson, which sometimes from an economic perspective simply isn't feasible. So I think that this is a a chance to have a beginning of these discussions. Certainly, this idea has been kicked around for a long time, but we haven't ever had the opportunity to sort of have the face-to-face meeting, the exchange of ideas. I certainly recognize that this, if it ever is built, isn't going to happen right away. But I think we have to start somewhere, and we do have to have a meaningful discussion. And this has to be a benefit for both sides. And in my opinion, I think this does or would result in a significant benefit to both regions. But in terms of you looking to sustain your local economy, your work base, your contractor base, I I see nothing but positives for the Fort Nelson region. I would hate to be having this discussion ten or twelve years from now when you're in the situation that we are in that there aren't those companies based in this region at all. And all of this work is coming out and going back down south. Because we're like you, we don't want to see someone fly in, fly out. We want to see them be residents, taxpayers, contributors from a volunteer perspective to benefit the entire region.
So Chief Gale, I would, I just want to say respectfully that we do have meaningful contact with the D N A. And this meeting was never meant to to say, okay, we're going to do this. Are you going to join in with us? We would have that consultation with the D N A before before we ever proceeded with it. We just wanted a high-level conversation to see, you know, and to hear, like, a lot of what you have said. I I know, but a lot of what the rest have said I do did not understand because I am not close to Rainbow Lake to where the oil patch was. So I didn't hear a lot of, you know, our contractors going over there, taking jobs away, things like that. So it's, that's what we were looking for, were the pros and cons of of putting in a road.
Yeah. And and thanks for that. And and Chief Gale, thanks for your insight because I think it's important to the to the overall conversation. There's no doubt about it. And this was, as you say, a high-level conversation to introduce ourselves to each other, introduce the concept. We could debate, I guess, back and forth about the the merits, benefits, the pros and cons. But I think being able to get together and just talk about it, talk about our our concerns and positives and negatives helps us all to be better. We haven't even, even if we were to all come onto the same page, we haven't even talked about talking to our provincial government who who likely would never spend a nickel on this road. We've been trying to get them to spend money on the Alaska Highway, in particular, the, for me, the Peace River Bridge for decades and haven't been able to see a ascent out of Victoria. So, you know, unless we're talking about some kind of a merger, I think it'll be a long time before we're talking about trying to get any money out of out of Victoria to try to make this a reality. But we've debated and discussed amongst ourselves, you know, just the merits of even having this meeting. And we all agreed that opening the dialogue and opening discussion is always a good thing. And we invited our our neighbors and our business community into the conversation so that we'd be open and transparent, and everybody would have an idea about what what this 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 idea is 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 about. So I certainly thank you for for opening the door and requesting a meeting with all of us. And I look forward to any opportunities that that might come forward to further the conversation. And and further the understanding, I guess, of of the the benefits, the pros and the cons of of this idea.
Well, thank you very much for agreeing to meet with us. It was great to meet all of you. And we sure look forward to maybe meeting again.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Somebody's got their hand up there, and I just can't see who it is. Is it Josh?
Yeah, it was Josh. I'm just going to say, I'd rather. The Alberta government has many times mentioned that they would badly meet B C at the border. So this is this is this discussion you guys have to have in your area and figure it out because we're only a few weeks away from or not even from from completing the project to meet at the border. And there's very little road that needs to actually be built in on the Alberta side. So the majority of the work would certainly be in British Columbia. So, but yeah, thanks for the time to meet with us anyway, for sure.
Yes, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Look forward to possibly having more talks in the future. I'll say goodnight on behalf of Town Rainbow Lake. Thanks.
And good, oh, sorry. I think Chief Gale had her hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna give the last word to Chief Gale unless there's anything else you folks had to say.
No, I was just going to say thank you for your guys' time and appreciate the the town for inviting us to this conversation. Yeah. Thanks. My see.
Good night from high level.
Right.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Okay, I guess we've got fifteen minutes left or so of this this meeting. I think that was a was a good opening discussion and good opportunity to to see some faces. I mean, I would have liked to seen it face, been face-to-face with everybody, but you can see how many people attended, that it's something that that a lot of people are are interested in or at least hearing about. And, you know, we have trouble sometimes just trying to get our own staff and council together. You can imagine four different communities all trying to bring everybody together at the same time. And then involve our indigenous neighbors. It just it just starts to become overwhelming. So.
Yeah, that's the world we live in now. It's the virtual reality, and I'm very thankful for it because you're able to participate and be involved in these important discussions wherever you may be. Okay, well, I'll let you guys get back to your meeting. Just thanks for having us and thanks for inviting us. And then maybe because we are planning on doing some joint meetings, we can have a face-to-face meeting here in the next couple of weeks.
Good. Thanks, Chief Gale.
Okay, see you guys. Have a good night. Thanks.
Yeah, you don't have to stay, Archie.
You can stay if you like, Archie.
Oh, really appreciate you invited to this and, you know, I think we all got our pros and cons there. I mean, like, we're here too, so I see a lot of people come up here and work and then money left, so that was kind of our biggest concern. So we had full council show up.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
Glad to work together in the future.
Yeah. Excuse me. Okay, that brings us to Committee of the Whole Report, twenty, sorry, eight twenty-three, the Draft Procedure Amendment Bylaw Review. Staff provided us with a side-by-side look. We've gone through this once already, pretty much line by line. So really, I think all we need to do is tonight is just ask if any of you have have any questions, comments, any additions that you'd like to see to this this new bylaw? So we can let staff work on it some more, and if not, then we just need to ask staffs come to a resolution to ask staff to put it on on a council meeting in the future. So, please.
Yeah, just have a quick comment. I really appreciated the way the report was laid out, the side-by-side, line-by-line, yellow highlights. That paper copy was totally awesome. So you made a difficult job much easier, so I I don't have anything to add or to change. Just wanted to mention how much I appreciated how the report was laid out.
I agree. A lot of work went into this one. It's a it's a very important, it's really dry. But as I said, as I said earlier on, it's at the at the start when we all came together for the first time is, you know, it's it's one of the most important things that that we we do is how we interact with each other at meetings and with the public. And it's yeah, it's good to see a piece of work done already and early and early in our in our term. So I'm, I didn't see any questions or comments other than that around the table. So we'll ask staff, we'll make a recommendation to staff that they bring this forward probably at the next meeting, March twenty-seven. Yeah, okay, and then we can do some readings on that. Okay, seven point two, we decided to be cross. So seven point three is Committee of the Whole Report, number ten twenty-three, the housing options. I would like to take this in camera. This is a, this is a discussion about potential real estate purchase, and I think that should be done in camera. All right, so. So the procedure by law allows us to go in camera with respect to with respect to land law and legal. And from a committee of the whole perspective, we just need consensus around the table that that we're prepared to do that. And I think that's the last thing. So so that'll allow us to finish off before we have dinner and then start the six-thirty meeting. So do I see consensus around the table that will take that in camera? Okay, good. So we'll just take a quick recess while the room clears, and we'll take this this in camera. So we recall the we recall the Committee of Whole Meeting back to order. And there's nothing, no, nothing to rise was reported at this particular time. And we will adjourn the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Thank you very much.